It is, I just print out extras.
Hey, it's 10 o'clock and we can get started. Sure you got us open?
Yes, sir.
This is Maryland County Administrator on Leach County Water Prairie, Mr. Terry Johnson.
Your Honor, Father, thank you for this day. Lord, just thank you. I hope you have many blessings. Lord, just thank you for each one here. Lord, just we ask your blessing on this meeting here today. Lord, just, you know, lead, guide, and direct us in everything we do. Lord, just pray that everything we do, we do it in a way to be pleasing. Just go with us, give us verse. Jesus, that would be great.
Amen.
Thank you, Terry. First of all, we need approval of a sin agenda, just a monthly routine.
That works, Mark.
Motion to CJ. Second, Randy, all in favor? Motion, Terry.
Ready? CJ.
Tracy, okay. They're on three or four. One. Those are the three.
It's true. He's running away, dude. Hey, we look. Approval of new employee payroll authorization. With administrative assistant bookkeeper, county administrator's office. Terry's wanting to start October 18th.
Motion to him.
Motion to Randy. Second, for Sam, all in favor? Motion, Terry. Terry has a prayer.
What now? I did.
We didn't make it through outside.
I'll pick you up. She won't think you're the law.
So you can talk to her now, Terry?
I'm glad.
Approval of training and travel expenses for Kenneth McCowen, the 911 Coordinator Association.
Much.
Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second, for Randy. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of renewing contract with J U Vance and Company for August services for fiscal year 2021 and 2022. Motion to Sam.
Second.
Second, for Randy, all in favor? Motion, Terry. He's hill pressing, yeah. Yep.
I'm making this to be better.
We're looking at kind of. Approval of resignation of William Pennap Baker, District 3 Library Board Member, Department of David Moore.
Much.
Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second, for Randy. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of voiding outstanding checks from 2019 and 2020 in Justice Court. Motion to CJ. Second, for Sam. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Open sealed be its. For selling five tractors.
Alright, so we got our first bid. First bid was submitted by District 3 Clerk for all five tractors.
Two thirty.
Correct, two thirty one five. Second bid was submitted by Clay Meeks. Well, yeah, on behalf of Baker Equipment. Do a bid for $250,776.
Second, seven seventy seven.
Yes.
Fifty seven fifty seven.
And then the last bid is by Washington Holcomb Tractor Company. Holcomb Tractor Company. They placed a bid of $230,000.
For District 3 Clerk was two thirty one five. Clay Meeks was two fifty seven seventy six. Washington Holcomb, two thirty.
I'm making a motion to accept the highest bid.
Motion made by Randy to accept the highest bid, which is Clay Meeks. CJ, second. All in favor? Motion, Terry. authorized an increase in sheriff salary in the amount of $5,000 annually as authorized by the Mississippi Code Section 25-3-25. So we have this on the budget.
Sir.
Motion to Randy. Second to CJ, I mean Sam. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of change order on contract with U Banks. Reduction of $116.32. Approval of file construction pay application in the amount of $74,491.20. Make motion. Motion to Sam.
Second.
Second, for Randy. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Authorized inter fund loan from General Fund to Martin Down North Utilities Fund. Pay invoices in anticipation of grant funds in the amount of $94,027.40. Approved request for reimbursement of the signing.
Much.
Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second, for Randy. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of manual check. 2021 file conference registration. Mississippi Common Medical Examiner Association. Motion to Sam.
Second.
Second, for CJ. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of September surrender tag list.
Motion to print.
You want to leave segment? Motion to Randy.
Second.
Second, for CJ. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of then solvency list. We got that out.
Alright, then solvency list is just something I have to turn over to the board the first meeting in October of every year. These are just personal property bills that have not been paid. They are returned checks that we've not been reimbursed for. And then your mobile homes that have not paid their taxes for the year. That's official, but I have copies. Do y'all want to look at any of these? And it has the mail on there. Which is perfect. It's not that we won't collect these. It's just I have to turn these in if they have not been paid by October 1st. And I continue to try to get these by sending certified mail, any of that kind of stuff to get the papers in, letters, phone calls. Oh, that's a good one. Cindy did those. Yeah, Cindy does mobile homes and those are tagged on the bag.
Yeah, some fractal property.
Oh, yeah. I figure it's just an oversight. Go get a letter. Like your personal property, we send the notices in December, notices for delinquent taxes to get in June. And then October 1st, I send this list to you. And we send letters, a certified mail that they have until October 31st to pay. If it's not paid by then, it's a tax lien against their personal property that will be filed. Mobile homes are paper. My ass will just continue to get mobile homes.
Need a motion.
Motion to print.
Motion to Randy.
Second.
Second, for CJ. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of forward inventory deletions from Circuit clerk's office.
Got a computer and three scanners. They all click work.
Second.
Motion to Sam. Second, for Randy. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of Lexicon Mission Claim Board. We got five.
Some of them.
Second. Motion to Randy. Second, for CJ. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of Circuit clerk payment for services registered.
Much.
Motion to CJ. Second, for Sam. All in favor? Motion, Terry. Approval of school bus trial ads for the I D School District. They think they're eighteen. They say is this the whole list of this?
If you look at the firm, it's going to give you a listing of everybody and then it tells more about them. I don't know if they were not, this is something the judge is sending in this morning.
They say it's probably doodles. That means it's like one more egg thing.
I need copies of those, take please.
Sir?
I need copies of those. Nothing to see. You got some real.
You'll give me just a minute, actually, if I can. It's from the New Albany. It's just a city school.
The young and the old are still different.
I'm very much. Motion to CJ. Second, for Sam. All in favor? All in favor? Motion, Terry. Scotty, you have anything else? Kurt, you have anything?
Alright, so we got Mr. Brad Davis here today from Jackson. He's been our bond counselor for the 911 bonds and issues. Brad, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you Chandler. So, yeah, so after this board meeting, Terry and President Chancellor Clerk and I are going to meet with Cliff Russell, sitting right back there on the couch from USDA, close out our
You can see him somewhere.
Yeah, he slipped in. To close out on that borrowing of the E911 equipment. I've got all the documents here, we'll take care of that. But when I was planning to come up here, decided that might be a good opportunity to kind of just talk about some recent changes in bond law in Mississippi that might be of interest to how the county does some business. This is informational only. We want to discuss further later on if we can. But like Chandler said, my name is Brad Davis. I'm from Watkins Nager Law Firm in Jackson. I'm actually from Ripley, just up the road, so not far from home at all. Done a lot of work with City of Albany over the years, which is kind of how Chandler and I got reconnected to work on this E911 issue. Worked with Reagan Russell and the mayor and the city folks on a variety of things over the last several years. This is Jeffrey Nicholson with Municipal Advisors of Mississippi. So I thought it'd be useful to have someone for me to quickly talk about some legal changes and how that would affect some financial structuring of potential bond issues that the county wanted to give that some thought. So we'll make this brief and answer any questions folks may have. So, but interrupting any time if something I say doesn't make sense, you can elaborate on something. Back in 2018, the legislature passed, y'all are probably familiar with that Infrastructure Modernization Act, which allows a variety of things. One of the things it does particularly that impacts the ability of a county to issue bonds is that it started reimbursing. I guess for a county, it really didn't reimburse something you were already getting, right? Basically taking sales taxes collected at the state level on internet sales only and distributing portions of that money to counties and cities. So for cities, it increased the amount of sales taxes that they were going to get. Of course, it still goes to the state, then it comes down. But the legislature in wisdom included counties in that. So counties have been getting, I guess up to now, you had four transfers of funds. January 2020, January twenty, no, January and July 2020, and January and July 2021. Jeffrey will talk about those specific numbers in a minute. These are the amount of money based on the formula in the statute in that act that this money is coming to the counties for road and bridge repairs and improvements. So one of the things that the bill allowed was for a county to use that, those funds for debt service on the bonds issued for road and bridge improvements. Not for water sewer, not for county buildings, but for road and bridge repairs only, which is obviously a need everywhere in the state. Has had been forever, it still is. So you've got this sort of new revenue stream, now you've got four payments. There's no real timeout in the statute on that, on that, what's called reimbursement from the state down to the county. Now, over time, you know what? I sort of subscribe to the what's the legislature given? Legislature can take it away model, so you have to think about that. But it allows you to use that money for debt service on bond issues. Technical thing that it doesn't allow, doesn't allow you to pledge those monies. Meaning you can't say, well, we pledged for five years, 10 years, 15, whatever the case may be, that we'll use those funds to pay debt service. It just doesn't allow that. But you can't, so draw a distinction between pledging the money and just having it as a line item in your budget that you could dedicate to the repayment of bonds. You would still issue any bonds for road and bridge improvements as general obligation bonds. I think the last time, I'll talk about the legal debt capacity of the county in just a moment, but probably the last time that the county had a large bond issue for road bridge or other infrastructure improvements was like 2015 for the Toyota project. In fact, that was, it wasn't 2015. It was about below over $6.1 billion. In October of 2015, those are for payoff in July of 2026. And there's about $3.1 billion outstanding, which is all the general obligation debt the county has, not including what we're going to close on today in the amount of a half million dollars. So today, you've got about $3.6 million of general obligation debt outstanding. Give you kind of a picture of your total capacity. The way the statute says you calculate that, you take your assessed value, which is of all the real and personal property in the county, which is right at $200 million, just south of $200 million as of the 2020 assessment. That's probably gone up a little bit since from 2021.
We're over 300 big counties, Toyota, Philou and all that.
So that is rolled off now? Okay, so yeah, so my numbers are pretty low then. I was using the pre-tax abatement roll-off numbers. So you're, well, I'm going to give you this number, which is pretty high, and you can multiply, so using my $200 million, you multiply that by 15% gives you a debt capacity of right at $30 million. There's probably somebody in here with better math skills than me, but 15% of 300 billion would be about what? Forty-five, alright, good. So think somewhere at the low end of 300 up to $45 billion is your capacity. You've got about 3.6 after we close today outstanding. So that's a significant, you know, there's a significant amount of capacity. Now, certainly don't, you know, it's always important for me not to confuse capacity to borrow is not the same as ability to repay, right? Ability to repay is based on your millage rates. So right now, you've got millage on an amount sufficient to service the debt that you have outstanding for Toyota. So if you just, that's sort of just a quick overview of what your legal debt limit is. So if the county wanted to consider, and we're not supposing anything, just giving you information that you can think about. If you decided that you had road and bridge improvements that you think that you might want to move forward with rather than going on a completely pay-go basis, which may be what you're largely doing now, if you could capture some savings and some efficiencies by borrowing money, it would be a general obligation to the county, but if you use, and Jeffrey's going to get into this in just one moment, if you dedicate it and size that issue based solely upon the amount of a portion, not all, but a portion of this new internet sales tax diversion that you've got coming in, then there wouldn't be a necessity for adding any kind of millage for debt service. At least if you kept it, if you structured it right, and Jeffrey's going to talk about this, structured it right, kept the term short, 10, 12 years, maybe 15 at the outside, but for a road improvement, 15 is a little long just because of the useful life of whatever work you do. You may be coming around repaying on it while you're, you may be still paying outstanding debt while you're coming back through for another round of improvements of some sort. So 10 and 12 seem the most reasonable if you thought roads largely. If you start thinking bridges, that's a longer useful life. You can blend that a little bit more. But what we see is much more road improvement using this money, a little less bridge, because I think there are, y'all know more about this than I do. There are other, I think, bridge improvement programs, that emergency road and bridge program from several years ago that might be a little bit easier to manage on the bridge side. So just one last comment on sort of the legal side. I'll let Jeffrey talk about some of the financial numbers he's collected on those counties, reimbursements and how that would look in terms of the bond issue for road and bridge improvement. That if you went forward again, it would be a general obligation, wouldn't require a millage, wouldn't require a millage increase, but you'd still go to the same basic procedure. Those of you who were around in 2015, I think a lot of you were, that you have a, you know, adopt a resolution that says we want to issue so much in bonds. It does get published in the newspaper. See if any taxpayers have any comments on it. And if there's not a sufficient comment at the time, usually about, publish about three times and see if anybody has something good or bad to say about it. And then you'd be free to proceed, assuming there was no written protests lodged against the issuance. So that's the sort of really quick, really, really high level overview of the legal side, so where the money comes from, how you can dedicate it, how the bond might get legally issued. how the bond might get legally issued. Now, Jeffrey, I thought it would be good to have someone here who could really dig into the financial element a little bit more to give you.